Okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for August 1st to order. Roll call please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hersberg.
Here.
Phil Willems.
Here.
Chris Elner.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Okay, confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on 7/29. The final agenda was posted in all three posting locations on 7/28 and 7/29. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on 7/28.
Thank you.
We have one more thing we're trying to say each time, and that's the two important things for audience members. Please sign in on the sign-in sheet with your name, address, and municipality for accurate record-keeping. And those interested in participating in the public comment section, please fill out a public comment form and hand it to me before public comment. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, first item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
Would move approval of the consent agenda.
Well, second it.
You have a motion and a second? Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, I just have it.
I'll stay, since I work for the applicant under item four.
Okay.
Carly, you got that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Sam. All right, public comment, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment to the village board on anything on, off the agenda, or anything? Do we have any sheets turned in? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Presentations, present updates regarding EMS operations and funding. I'm assuming Scott's here for that. And Todd, do you have an introduction to it, or just let Scott roll?
Uh, no, I th- well, we invited Scott because there's some notable programmatic changes, service delivery changes that are being planned for EMS. It does have a budget implication. Renee and I did meet with Scott to hear more about this. And we suggested that even though we're not, we haven't started our budget deliberations with the board yet, that because of what's being proposed, we thought it'd be important for you to hear sooner than later. So then, we can receive direction from the board on how to proceed with our budgeting approach. So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Should be coming up there for you. Yeah, there you go. Give it a try again.
It's moving.
Did you click the on but- on button on the left? It should be green. There, there you go.
Sorry my wife doesn't want me to use the clicker. All right. So first of all, I want to say thanks for letting me come over and kind of talk to you guys about what's going on. Phil's very well versed in what we've been talking about. We've been working on this for the past year. If you remember last year, those of you that were here, we came and talked a little bit about the budget and the what was that we've been facing as far as call volume and how much we've been needed throughout the community these last few years and how it's not really coming down. So what I thought I'd do today is first go over just a real brief overview of kind of how we currently operate, and then start to kind of lead into what we're looking to do in starting out next year. So kind of a quick overview apparatus-wise, currently we have two ambulances and one, we call it a jump cart. We end up using, utilizing that jump cart when we can when our ambulance isn't in district to at least be able to give medical care to these patients while we're breathing. Current staffing, we've got a medical director, it's actually UW Consortium. We contract them. Ouch, he's not a true employee. We have myself and our captain, who are both salaried employees. We have six full-time paramedics working a 4896 schedule, 14 part-time paramedics, and 29 volunteers. And our volunteers right now range anywhere from paramedics to drivers. So we got a whole array of people helping us out in that volunteer role. So our current staffing model, a lot of people see two ambulances and they think that we're able to staff them both all the time. That's not the case. What we do is we put our two full-timers on in those top two lines. This is actually some snippets from our actual scheduling software here. Uh, we put our two full-time up there in that medic slot. And then, as the volunteers sign up, so this is actually today's schedule we've got going, Jesse, one of our volunteers, is able to sign up and create a three-person backup for us. If we don't get any other volunteers to sign up, we're only able to get that one ambulance out the door for the day. And the second ambulance stays out of service. Now, every once in a while, we do get the chance where we got two volunteers signing up in the same spot. So this is back a couple of weeks ago now. Same shift, but we were able to get Allison Ambulance sign up. So in that case, we're able to get two ambulances out the door. Unfortunately, this is only happening about 11 or 12% of the time. Um, we're kind of at the mercy of the volunteer schedule, home life, those kinds of things. So, kind of putting this into perspective now, as you start looking into our call volume, these are our total call volume numbers since 2017. As you can see, 2020, that's when COVID hit and the pandemic started hitting on us. Most EMS departments actually saw a reduction in call volume. We still saw a small increase, if we'd because of the increase in call volume that we've been watching. But you'll notice it doesn't kind of range up with the rest of the numbers as we move along. So, this is kind of nice, I go back and forth. If you look at the total call volume, 1929, 2010, for the last couple of years, these are the calls that we're able to make. So you can see we're making just a portion of all those calls right now with only having one, occasionally two ambulances staffed. So what that leaves us with is how many times we go to mutual aid. This is the part that's been getting us nervous as an apartment, is how hard this has been creeping up recently. Again, 2020 being that COVID year is driving anomaly. When a lot of people weren't able to work, we actually were able to bolster our volunteer numbers because the volunteers weren't going into work and they were able to come give us all that time during the odd day to be able to get the second ambulance out the door. So that really helped us be able to make a lot of calls without catching our mutual aid as much. Um, but right now, unfortunately, last year, we had 203 calls that we weren't able to make it to. And then this year, we're tracking towards 238 calls that we weren't able to make it to. Now, mutual aid, for those of you who don't know, it's when we don't have the ambulance in service, we gotta bring in a department. The list here, these are the different departments that come in and help us out on a regular basis. As you can see, it's really kind of dependent. We actually have the largest service area in the county as far as square mileage goes. So we really paying a lot of different departments when we start looking at mutual aid. As far as the village proper goes, it's primarily Madison and Middleton. Um, we normally give Med 10 or Middleton. So, we put together, this is all stuff I've been kind of talking with, with the commission about a little bit, put together some costs of mutual aid and kind of what it ends up bringing for us. So, obviously, I think this is kind of the most common one. It's gonna take an ambulance away from our responding agency. Normally, that's not a big deal. We all do mutual aid. We run mutual aid into the forest once in a while, different places would come in here normally for us. But to put it into perspective, Med 10, which is Madison's North ambulance, in 2021 was into the village itself 117 times. That's quite a bit. Middleton came in 52 times. So that was last year. This year, they're on track 68 and 38 respectively, as far as where they are halfway through the year. When we start looking at mutual aid response times, when we're in-house, we're averaging four minutes and 51 seconds from time of page to time of patient. So that, those are actually, I know Phil gets sick of me saying this all the time, we're pretty proud of those numbers. Right now, we're actually the fastest out the door in the county, which has been pretty nice. Unfortunately, when you start looking at bringing in mutual aid, you're looking at well over 15 minutes before that ambulance can get to the residence. That's starting to get kind of concerning. I mean, I have the numbers, I'm not gonna read them off as to what an extra 10 minutes can do to health of patients when we do have severe patients. Increased calls for fire department, and I'm actually going to read these numbers here. But the fire department, a lot of times, especially when Madison comes in, they have response cards in place that any higher acuity call that they go to, they have to have a fire department respond with them. And I know Bill's here, he can attest to this one. In 2021, that actually equated to an extra 35 calls for fire at the cost of about $5,100. The scary part is in 2022, we're at 31 calls already for almost the same cost. So that's almost doubling already this year, just with the times of Madison's coming in and they end up getting paid to go with them. And then the other thing that we're missing out on is the $125,000 to $150,000 in revenue. We'll kind of get into that here for third proposals. So what we're proposing to the commission is to bring in six more full-time paramedics to staff our second ambulance. That way, we know that it's consistent. With the hiring, we also have to buy a used ambulance, so that we have a third there in case we have a breakdown, something like that, we can still get them out the door. The commission has already approved this purchase, and this is actually new to Phil. We just found the truck and we should have a purchase in the next couple of weeks or so. We're buying this from the city of Madison. It's their old used one. So we should have that in place here pretty quick. This here, this is the part that Todd definitely wanted me to get into a little bit. When you start looking at operating expenses, this is our current budget right here. And then you can see the jump that we're looking at for 2023. This is a pretty big jump. It's obviously, we don't kick something like this lightly. Now with this, this is done, all get billed back to municipalities. That's one unique thing with EMS, is we actually have revenue coming in from the patients that we do serve. So right here, you can look, the 2022 budget, this is an excerpt from what the commission gets every month.
Scott, you have a laser pointer on there if you wanted to direct people to certain figures.
That's a little red one.
The red one, yep.
Oh, it's kind of neat. So, this is our budget in 2022. This grayed out area, this is our operational income that we bring in. When we originally budgeted this at the beginning of the year, that was budgeted at 675. However, and then the next slide, we'll get into it. With the revenue increases, we've really been able to jump that up a lot. Moving into 23, you can kind of see those numbers there where we came up with it, and then the overall differences. Looking down here, this is how we split up the cost. We do it on a per capita basis. So you'll see that we end up going from $25 per capita to $45 per capita under this plan. This is definitely a big jump. At the commission level, we decided this was definitely not doable. And we started looking into ways to split this across two years, kind of like we've been doing this whole time. Hasn't been beef enough trying to use our reserves to be able to soften the blow as much as possible. So the first thing we did is we took a look at the revenues. Very early 2022, actually back in January, we increased our user fees. And now, we didn't think we'd get quite this much, but the projected increase we're looking at is about $275,000 in revenue in addition to what we had budgeted and planned for. And then, once we do put the second ambulance in service, we're gonna see that additional $125,000 to $150,000 come through in the additional run revenue, which is gonna help offset a lot of that cost back to the municipalities. We also, at the commission level, are planning to move, reallocate some money from our building contingency fund and our vehicle replacement fund. These are both funds for building contingency. We put money way out of our operating budget every year, just in the case something goes wrong with the building and the vehicle replacements, instead of borrowing, we build that into our operations. And what we did with this plan is we created a new vehicle replacement schedule. This is us hanging on to the ambulances a little bit longer to be able to pull this out and have a little bit more efficient ambulance replacement cycle. So we were able to pull an extra $200,000 out of these to help with the phase-in concept moving into 23. This here, I don't know how well you guys can read that. I was hoping that these numbers would get big enough. So again, over here, this is our current budget and what the village would pay in, as well as the rest of the municipalities. And then going into 23, as we split this across two years, you would see, and I can't use the map in front of you, I'm looking at my notes here. The village would see a maximum of $146,725 increases for 2023. That's this number compared to over here. Now, a couple of things that we've been working on to try to help offset this a little bit more. We did write a grant. It's a Governor Heber's EMS Helping Grant. It's through the COVID 20 that the state got, that they put this out there and were eligible for up to $237,000. Of that, approximately $80,000 of it, we wrote to help with the staffing. We also wrote to help with the purchase of the used ambulance and a bunch of the other equipment that needs to go into this. So we're hoping to offset it. We're not gonna hear for quite a while whether or not we've got that. But if we do get any of it, it's just gonna help lower that number down a little bit. And then, as you can see, we reallocate some of the funds here, which just basically brings itself down, end up using some money out of our reserves yet to be able to balance the budget down here on the bottom. And then going into 2024, we'll see the other half of the jump. All the numbers would be the same, although we would be looking into it. The commission has decided that from here on out, every year, we're gonna reevaluate the user fees and adjust them accordingly based off of the municipality impacts and those kinds of things. So we're gonna be looking at that every fall now and adjusting those accordingly. So you can see the little bit of a jump here in the operational income. But moving down then, you can see where that's gonna budget out. We'd actually quit about 500 bucks if we all kind of held true to where we are on the budget. We put a couple dollars back into, into our covers for that. Looking at the timeline, the hope is that we can start posting the positions in October to be able to get through the whole process, just like PD hiring processes, where these positions are very long and drawn out. Hoping for a go-by date mid to late January. I've been telling the commission, and it's ringing very true. The unfortunate part that we're in right now is this is one of the biggest hiring years in the history of the county for EMS. They have almost 32 open positions throughout this year they're trying to hire, throughout the different municipalities and different departments. So trying to find talent is, is kind of difficult right now. So the earlier we can get it out, the better to try to bring the talent in. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing for next year. I know Phil and the commission have been working hard to get a lot of these numbers as low and as far down as we can. The unfortunate reality is, I mean, right now, we got mutual aid coming in, excuse me, once roughly every 36 hours, which is really just, I mean, honestly unacceptable, in my eyes at least. That's, that's a number that you really don't wanna watch go a whole lot higher at this point. To put it into perspective, you know, a couple of our neighboring departments, when they hit 105 calls, they put in another ambulance. When Fitzrooney hit, they were hitting right around 90, they put their next ambulance into service. Just to kind of put it into perspective as to where we are right now on this. I know we've been talking about this for about, what, a year and a half or so now? So, thank you of the commission for at least taking a look at this and taking the time to put the numbers in on it. It's an unfortunate thing, I know it's not cheap, but I, I think it's basically what we're gonna have to do eventually. So really, what we're doing is looking to the board now, giving them a heads up what we're looking at. We'll go back to the commission, actually, I think I'll be speaking to Westport later this month as well, and going back to the commission and kind of moving along from there. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions? I do have some handouts for you guys. I didn't know how that worked, being that it wasn't on the packet itself, if I was able to hand those out or not here live. It's basically just the drawn-out documents that I pinpointed in there. So we got the budget and a few other things, that municipality tax impact across the way. And then, what it does to our sinking funds after we reallocate that stuff. Yeah, I did add one more in the back there, Todd. This shows, that's a question I get asked a lot, and I figured I might as well just put it in here before the question gets asked, is how the, the call volume shapes up with the allocations across the municipalities? I do get that question a lot. So I went ahead and threw those numbers in as well. This is all stuff that the commission has gotten already. If you look through it, that's the, the first one is the 2023 proposed budget. With the year 2023 and a half phase in there. The second document is gonna be that municipality tax impact that showed here up here. Excuse me, the third document is a designated fund impact, meaning it's how we're looking at reallocating the funds to what's happened. And then that last document is a call volume for a special amount. So, I think from here, it's probably gonna be easy to stick with you, but you gotta ask questions.
I'll just go to Phil first.
Well, not a question, but a statement. The rules have changed everything, so that's why we can't use volunteers as what? We have to have EMTs. Call volume's up. We're the only district in the area that has volunteers yet, and that's simply because of our relation with Madison and MATC. And we gotta take some pressure off the fire department because their volunteers are getting eaten up helping us. And it would be nice if we had a few patients in town that didn't call us quite as often as they do. Same ones.
I'm not gonna make that request, but okay. Nyla?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned new user fees?
Yes.
How do those compare with the other municipalities in Dane County?
So what we did with the user fees is we actually matched Middleton's. So we are dollar for dollar what Middleton charges.
Okay, and how many calls do you have a year that, a percentage that do not get paid?
What do you mean by that?
You know, if someone doesn't have funds to pay, what do you do and how's that handled?
So we don't track how many don't get paid. What we do track is, so right now, the vast majority of our calls, if we transport, are being billed out at $1,500 per call. And that's everything, that's all inclusive aside from mileage. And we average about $512 per call in revenue that we're bringing in. That's what we track. It, it gets a little bit too far into the weeds when you start looking at payer mixes, private pays, refusal of pays, those kinds of things. As part of the user fee update, we did enact collections. And that's for the first time, at least since I've been here that I know of, that that's ever happened. So we are sending patients to collections, and that's after a year of non-payment. We do have it set up that as long as the patient pays at least $10 a month, they will not go to collections. So you can set up payment plans along the way.
One, one additional question. I have heard of municipality, or EMS districts that charge more for residents versus non-residents? Does Wannakee do that or not?
We used to. We do not anymore. Now it's a patient as a patient. Regardless of the treatment they get, we don't up-charge, down-charge anything. A patient is a patient, they all pay equally.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jerry, any questions?
No, I just think it's a, you know, something that's very important to, to support this. You know, if your family had to wait that 10 extra minutes for mutual aid, which is a wonderful thing, if you had to wait that 10 minutes, I, I just don't think that's acceptable, and I support this.
Karen?
Yeah, um, thank you for putting this all together, and it's nice to know this stuff ahead of time. And I know you guys are doing a lot with what you have and still providing good services, so thank you. Yeah, we don't wanna be bad neighbors or overusing other people's resources, and they're in the same boat.
Sam?
Let's say meat and potatoes expense that we have to support. Our residents expect a high quality of service, and it's our responsibility as the board and all the other boards in the district to maintain that high level of service that we've all come to respect.
Can I ask one more question? Is it doable, Renee?
Well, lots of things are doable. I mean, there's, we'll just have to look at what approach works. I mean, certainly just inserting that much into, you know, our budget is, is difficult. But, you know, there, we can look at different approaches.
Okay.
And, and we don't even have half our numbers at all yet, so.
Okay, I just.
But yeah, I mean, there's, there's things we can do to make it work.
You're the money person, so we, we need to know.
Yeah, perspective-wise, if you remember from last year's budget process, based on the growth, there's a formula that establishes the amount to which our levy can go up without seeking a referendum. I believe that, if you wanna call it a cushion, we had last year was around 300,000 or so.
I don't recall, but.
Three, three to 350,000. So this proposal is, based on last year's numbers, I believe, is about half of the allowable levy increase prior to the need to go to the voters. Now, it, it doesn't mean there aren't other maneuvers with our, within our budgeting process that we can talk about, but those are, those can be challenging, and those can be, kind of, once you use, once you use some of those opportunities, they're gone. And that'll just kind of put closer the potential for a referendum in the future, if spending is, is required, so.
But, I mean, that's the challenge that all municipalities in Wisconsin are really facing right now, is those levy limits and trying to fit even just the, the basic services within those limits. So it's not like we're unique in that perspective. It's just makes, makes our job more challenging to, to make it all work.
Thank you.
Are there any, I guess, recruitment things or kind of like training? I know some friends that have been with you guys starting volunteer and worked their way up, that you think are successful? Have you guys seen that, I mean, we also could be allocating, like, trying to grow those?
So, we already do to a point, we do have paramedic and school sponsorships
Okay.
that we do have for our volunteers. For lack of better terms, a lot of our volunteers have become interns, if you choose to use that word instead, to the point where they're here to get the education. And then they may stay, they may not, we make them sign two-year contracts to be able to receive that funding. We do still actively recruit with Madison College. We're actually partnering with UW, is putting on some EMS courses. Now, for the first time in a few years, we're partnering with them to try to bring people in. We're actually, I just read it a couple of days ago somewhere, that we're gonna start this program in the village where we sit in with high school.
Okay.
Where we struggle as, not just locally, but as an industry, is getting people to understand from high school on how to do this. Like, if you wanna be a police officer, you graduate high school, you go to law enforcement school. It's not quite that easy for EMS. You gotta go through some, some different avenues and ways to get into it. So we really are trying to help navigate that. So.
So that's an interesting comment. I can't wait to talk to Adam about how easy it is to become a police officer. Anyway. So we'll put that, we'll put that one out there right away. It's on video.
There goes your relationship.
I don't have to write it down. So I just have a couple of questions. One, when you were figuring your budget, so you mentioned there's 42 openings right now for people. How did, so it's gonna be very competitive to get people.
Correct.
So when you were doing your budget, how did you figure your employee, how you were gonna do wages with that to be competitive in the marketplace and bring people to us?
They're contracted. So the, our employees are represented by local 311. So those numbers are already set in stone, as far as what the employee rates are. When we set these rates two years ago, we were the second highest starting. And then we top out right even with everybody. So really, what it ends up working with, when you end up with the local, it's a conglomerate of raises and steps and those kinds of things. And so you play with how many steps you get and how fast you get them. I, I don't like saying it publicly a whole lot, but what you wanna do is you wanna bring them in and price them out. Is, is basically our goal, right? So you're able to get them in through the door and then get them to move up the ladder quicker and then kind of slowly plateau so that they can't afford to go anywhere else.
Okay, so getting them in the door is what I'm getting at, because we, we're gonna have to hire six new. So all those others, what do we do different then, since we're locked in at a price? What would be the draw to come to Wannakee?
So honestly, there's, there's really a couple of things. A, the call volume, that's huge for people, being able to come over, the busiest department in the county right now. That's a big one for people, and quite honestly, our reputation. You know, we put a lot of time and effort into our reputation, and people really, really wanna come. For instance, I know there are people that have already talked to me, said they're willing to leave the processes that they're in, you know, if offered. We really hang our hats on that. The fact that we are a combination offers a lot of people the opportunity to teach, which they don't otherwise get. That's really about all there is. Otherwise, unfortunately, one department's kind of the same as the next when it comes to where you're doing the same thing. It's just a matter of those little, I guess, intrinsic values that you can offer. You know, a better workday. Those types of deals are 4896 schedule, a lot of people really enjoy it, and you can reach farther with it. So we can reach as far down as northern Illinois. We've had to apply because they only make the drive twice a week. You know, they come up once and go home once every six days. So we have a little bit farther reach.
I mean, from my perspective, number one, and government's responsibility is public safety. And I applaud all of our folks this weekend for Wanafest and the parade and making sure everybody was safe and everything that we did to do that, that I feel like that's something that we always is number one on my priority, is making sure to take care of that. So as we go through this process, obviously, we have to make sure financially everything can work and Renee gets to have fun with that more than anybody with me. And Joe will probably be sitting in that chair as well, just the finance to make sure that we can get it done. And this transition's a little bit different for us. Obviously, with the volunteers, we've been fortunate to have that. This is a necessary positive, not evil. Necessary positive, so, thank you. Anybody that have any questions? We're not making any decisions tonight, are we?
Well, ti- timing is helpful. You 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 don't need to make a decision what this discussion does do and the opinions that you shared. Um, I would assume you're represented on the EMS commission. Phil is listening carefully because the commission is gonna be making decisions to initiate a process for recruitment. Um, now, Scott understands our budgeting schedule. He knows that we're not to public hearing on our budget until November. Um, and things can, things can change between now and then. So you see that his his timeline has the completion of a hiring process in mid-January, so there's room for that. But in the midst, uh, Phil has now guidance and and hearing from all of you about where you sit on the issue.
I mean, time response time, I mean, I I didn't like seeing that, but my other comment is, do you have a s- uh, any, I don't know, research or information on how many of the calls that were coming from Madison were coming to Wanake versus the other municipalities?
Yeah. Thanks, you got it on my, um, so I only ran the numbers for Med Ten, which is the North Madison in Middleton. And in two thousand twenty-one, Med Ten came to Village eighty-four times and Middleton forty-three times. And then so far, year-to-date, Med Ten has been in the Village fifty-nine times and Middleton twenty-four times.
So what I mean is, our other municipal, so Westport, they went into Westport, they went into Dane, they went into.
Um, I can do the real quick marijuana.
I'm I'm just curious, how many were? If the, if it jives with all the percentages for how many calls were done?
Um, so if you're looking at Med Ten, that would be thirty-three times in two thousand twenty-one. I don't have them broken out aside from just the, I get, I get, sorry, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if it, if that jives with this.
Cause I don't have it broken down that far.
Cause if I'm Dane, it's even further.
Right.
Unless they're coming from Lodi, I suppose.
So in Norman, they do, so what they do is they ping the closest vehicle, the closest physical ambulance that they're gonna get. So town of Dane, our portion of town of Dane will usually get Lodi. Um, most, everything east of the village will usually get to Forest or Sun Prairie. Village proper will get Middleton or Madison as well, if it's south. And then anything west, usually will get Middleton or across the lines.
So realistically, if I think of Westport, having North Madison come out, is that one of your calls that's fifteen minutes? Or are they really actually probably pretty close to the five to six minutes?
They're pretty close, they're pretty close. So the timeframes that I gave you are for the Village of Wanake calls.
Yeah, so that's, that's my only concern with this, frankly, was those calls, this is really about Wanake service. Everybody else has it close relatively from the others.
Correct.
So.
You guys are kind of on your own, I mean, I hate to say it, but almost like your own little island out here. You're kind of the farthest away from any mutual aid in our district that we cover.
Yeah, we actually go past Station Ten to get to some of our calls. Cherokee is in our service district, and we go past Med Ten to service people out there.
So that's, that's all. I mean, we have an agreement with everybody, and I I understand what that is, and it's just a challenge because this really is more Wanake centric, out of making sure our services are high here. Everybody else seems to be getting it strong no matter which which way they come from, if we don't have a vehicle.
In that perspective, yeah, absolutely.
So, okay, thank you, Scott, for coming in. I think, Renee, everybody has ideas of where we're at, yes? Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
For all you do. All right, next we have license and permits. Discuss and take action on original alcohol beverage license application for Inovino Wanake LLC doing business as Inovino Wanake. Carol?
This, this is pretty basic. Their new restaurant is getting close to opening, and they need a liquor license. So they're at twenty-eight hundred Sarah Lane, Suite C, and they're looking for Class B.
Okay, so we want it effective July first.
Just to let you know, this is a reserve license, um, so I'm not sure if you all know what that means, but that means it's a base of ten thousand dollars, they have to pay one time, and then they pay the other licenses, license fees on top of that.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about, that, yes? Okay, good.
How many of those do we have?
How many reserved? That's a great question. I know we have quite a few because the more we grow, the more we have. And the last numbers I thought I saw were like sixteen.
Okay. Sounds good.
Other questions about this? I'll I'll ask the the question everybody wants to ask me. So we're giving this license for July first, do we have an opening date?
Um, we don't have an official opening date. They, when they open, it'll be um, end of August, I thought, is what I was.
Okay.
Move approval of liquor license for Inovino for July, starting July thirty-first or July first?
July first.
July first.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any other comments? Call the question, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Chris, would you mind taking number three first, since we have a couple of guests in the audience for that item?
Does everybody else agree with that?
Sure.
Good, okay. Discuss and take action on two thousand twenty-one shortfall in room tax revenue and impact on Wanake Chamber of Commerce annual payment. Todd?
Uh, Renee prepared a memo for you, if if you wanna take it away, Renee.
Yeah, um, so you may recall, um, it was early in two thousand twenty-one um, where we had noted a shortfall in our two thousand twenty room tax revenue. So we have an agreement with the chamber that we will give them um the lesser of seventy percent of the room tax collected or ten thousand dollars. Um, and we were short um from the two thousand twenty room tax revenues. We made um them whole to the, to the ten thousand dollars using ARPA funds. And so in two thousand twenty-one, we had even fewer room tax collections. Um, we collected only thirty dollars of room tax in two thousand twenty-one. Um, so basically, the whole thing is is a shortfall this year. And so we were proposing to use ARPA funds once again to um pay them the historical ten thousand dollars.
Okay, board members' comments, questions?
Question, um, why is it that they know they're always going to receive ten thousand dollars? Is there, what do they do with it? The reason, the reason I'm asking it is, I don't think the room taxes are going to improve because of the situation with the um Baymont or whatever that is out there. So I'm just wondering if this is going to be something that we continuously do until some, until there is more room tax? Um, indefinitely, or what the situation is?
It's it's a fair question, and and we have Nick and Ellen here, uh, the chamber president and the chamber director, who can help answer some of those questions, too. It, yeah, that, we do not have certainty on the Baymont, the former Baymont's uh future. Um, in fact, they're talking with planning now about um some potential uh alternative uses for the facility. It's still in, it's still in discussion. Um, so I don't have a good answer for you on when room tax is coming back. Um, we do have a small hotel proposed downtown we've talked about. Um, every once in a while, we have a knock on the door from a potential hotelier looking at a new hotel in the village. Nothing imminent in front of you yet. So that's a challenge. Our current agreement, um, uh, that's in place is is as Renee suggested, this lesser of mechanism really wasn't an issue until the past couple of years, I believe. I don't think we've, prior to.
Prior to that, I think we always met the the ten thousand dollar um minimum.
As the lesser amount.
Yeah, as the lesser amount. Um, the statutes also require that room tax be used seventy percent for, um, it, I can't remember the name of.
Tourism.
Tourism.
Tourism entity, yeah. Um, and so that's what the chamber serves for us. So um, that's why kind of the agreement is the way it is and um why we've given them that sum. Um, and then, but yeah, I just, I don't think, prior to the COVID, um, starting in two thousand twenty, we haven't had any incidents um of a shortfall.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, I'm done.
This uh subject is near and dear to my heart because I, my relationship with the chamber goes back to square one. Uh, I wanna remind it, Westport kicks in about the same amount every year, and uh, they don't do it from revenue or anything like that. They're just doing it as a neighbor. The chamber does a vi- uh, supply a service with a good neighbor greeting for people that move in and helps to uh, at almost all of our community-wide events. And granted, some of them, they make a little revenue by selling beer and this and that, but they put together a team of volunteers and contribute to the overall style of the community that we'd like to live in. Listen.
Okay, Karen?
Um, I guess what kind of agreement? Is this just like, we have this verbal, you know, we've done this, or are we, we've signed, okay?
Yeah.
Curious, um. I agree with the sentiment of like, how sustainable is this if we are looking that we don't have room tax? Um, also, I think it's fair to maybe reevaluate sometimes, like, what the best way to actually be promoting the tourism. I think our events do bring people in, we have businesses that bring people in. Um, but it's making sure that we're actually like staying on the forefront of like how to um, time, like innovative ways maybe you bring people in, um, with other things, um, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sam, comments?
Nothing from me.
Nothing. Gary?
Um, yeah, I felt the other, our last meeting, when county executive was here, I I thought after the mini-gush, you should have asked him because they had set up on June. You know, the homeless thing was gonna go away, and we'd have our hotel back. I mean, it's had a really negative impact on our businesses, our restaurants, our shops. Um, and I think it affects all the residents who can't have their families stay in town uh, when they have a graduation, a party, a wedding. So I hope we get a new hotel. And I mean, the chamber is so integral to so many events in this community. I mean, I think that's something we need to make sure we do support um with funds going forward because, you know, without the chamber, a lot of our events would go away. So I think it's important that we fund them.
Okay, so I I'm just gonna give my feeling on this. I think the chamber is a vital piece of any community. All communities have chambers of commerce, and whether people want this type of business or that type of business, the chamber is integral with the village in making sure that those companies that are looking at us or are here in making sure that they're getting what they need from the community, from the the resources of the chamber. Gary brought up the festivals and things. I don't view that as 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 big a thing. That's another function of how do we keep the chamber active and going? That's where they raise enough money. The ten thousand dollars we give them don't, isn't gonna, isn't gonna cut on what their needs are. But it's the business community that they're reaching out to, to get the services that our residents need, whether it be our garbage collection to our restaurants, to you name it, all the different businesses. It's it's a vital function in the community that they're reaching out and doing that and helping to promote those businesses to our residents. So to me, um, you know, it's set up the way it is right now. I'd like it if we could set up something different in how we can fund it on an ongoing basis, based on what Nyla's comment is. We don't have those funds um right now through hotel. Uh, so what other source we can do to help? I think we absolutely need to, this this is an extension of us as a, as a village, in my opinion. So um, I support making sure that we 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 fund them to continue their operations. They're like the businesses this year, and I mean, I know some of their fundraisers. They didn't get those fundraisers this year, just like people maybe, um, you know, didn't get the opportunity to do certain things because weather or whatever else prohibited things from happening. So um, I'm, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to say. We have ARPA funds available to us for this year, and I would say that over the next year, we should look at, because we're not gonna always have ARPA funds, we should look at a different source for how we can fund this into the future. And I'd put that on staff to help us figure out how we can make that happen.
That's what I was gonna say, that was to Nyla's and 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 Erin's point, so you covered that base. I would say, out of fairness, I believe Westport's contribution is.
Five thousand.
There we go.
Ninety percentage.
But appreciate, it's 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 a much, much appreciated for my support, but you're right, though, Phil, that that that's not out of a other funding source besides general uh Westport uh funding.
So I think you're doing very well as a chamber with Westport, because you're doing better than the EMS is. About fifty percent of what we're giving, so. Sorry, that probably was inappropriate, I apologize, Scott, I don't wanna cause you any issues.
Are you ready for a motion, sir?
But um, I'm I'm actually gonna be the one that makes the motion on this one. Recommend to approve the use of ARPA funds to pay the Chamber of Commerce ten thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
So we have a motion to second, any other comments? Call the question, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. All right.
Brady at ten.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have, can I go back to number one now, Todd? Okay. Business intake, discuss and take action on Village Hall Board Room remodel and furnishings proposal from Creative Business Interiors. Todd, go ahead.
I I will, and unfortunately, I I was all set with um, with our rep from CBI, Creative Business Interiors here in Wanake to come and give a beautiful, perfect presentation. She got flown out of town for business unexpectedly. So you've got me, but provided a presentation that I'll go through. Um, so tonight, we are talking about this room. That title on that slide is misleading. We're not talking about the entirety of Village Hall. We're talking about the furnishings um and features of this room specifically. So we, staff has been authorized by the Village Board to look at uh options for this room, including technology upgrades, which we've talked about, to to move into a a hybrid system for our meeting broadcasts and recording um and citizen engagement. Uh, in concert with that, we're looking at modifications to the furniture and the furnishings here to make this room work exceptionally well. So a couple of things I'm gonna talk about tonight, one is the layout, and then specifically, some of the furnishings. Here is the proposal for how this room uh would be laid out differently with new furnishings. Um, I think basically, uh, to to look at this room and give you perspective, I've discussed with the judge already. Um, the plan would be to remove this corner island and podium. Um, although, the one worry of the judge and the court clerk is that there, you know, there is something to uh, a judge being positioned in a place, in a furniture feature that has, you know, a a level of authority granted to it by design. So the thought of of sitting at that table or this table wouldn't work necessarily for that function, which is why we're looking at a style of table that you have shown in the packet. But that would be removed, and essentially, that would be the centerpiece of the audience focus during a board meeting at the Village Board. Essentially, if you were to shift this table with the village president positioned in the corner, facing directly to the audience, that would be, that would be the position, you can kind of picture that shifted over. Um, I do wanna call out Keith, who's been a a wonderful team member for us for many years in performing the role of uh recording the meetings and managing all the equipment, and even today, coming in early to replace what broke last week with recording devices. Um, so in no slight to Keith, uh, the new technology system we're using won't require that level of staffing support to broadcast the meetings. Um, in addition, that equipment that you see there is not gonna be required either. So that, that arrangement, all that back there would be removed, and then the staffing table would be shifted down to that area of the room. We'll still be able to serve and address the board. We'll also be in a good position to address and care for the the citizens or guests as they enter the meeting. So that's where staff would be positioned, the podium would work out as it as it is. The chair numbering is almost, almost identical to what you see up there. The other elements of the design, which you can't quite see as well on this, would be uh these hanging blinds, which really don't work anymore, would be removed, replaced with uh darkening roller shades so we can have a good uh, the ability to control the the light in the room for. for presentation purposes. And then we would be providing a dropdown, a new dropdown screen. Oh, this is part of the IT. We've already covered the new screen and the new projector. All the chairs would be replaced. The staff chairs, the board chairs would be a different style. I don't think they would tend to sink slowly anymore. And then the audience chairs would be replaced with a more durable, non-cloth type fabric, not fabric, but material. So also carpeting would all be replaced in this room with a tile-type carpeting. So let me walk through the slides here quick. This is the layout as if it was running as court. This, this is one of the tables that would be moved and positioned in the center for the defendants or the, the folks who are addressing the, the judge, who would be positioned right here within staff adjacent. So that's the courtroom arrangement. Oh, can, let me go back here. Just pause about the, the design of the room layout. Any questions on that? Okay, well, let's, let's jump to the furnishings then. I learned something that shouldn't have surprised me. Furniture is, good furniture is really expensive. But it's, it serves a functional purpose for us. Some of the main questions we asked about and, and pursued with CBI is durability and the ability for these furnishings to be easily removed and replaced in a different place should we ever move Village Hall. So I can assure you that those things were addressed with, with these furnishings. This is the, this is the board table design. The key, there's, there's three key features. One is modesty. Modesty meaning that, I know you don't like the color, Chris.
I didn't say.
We can, we can change the color. Do not look at the color, look at the style. This comes in three pieces, so it can be taken apart and removed. But it's got full modesty panels from the tabletop down to the, down to the floor. So you'll be able to store your bags or extra items down there and wherever, whatever shoes you care to wear. Along with the upper modesty panel that is gonna help hide electrical outlets, your papers as they're before you, your Diet Dr. Pepper, et cetera. Certainly presents a style of table that the municipal judge is fa, is favorable of. And then, as you can see, there are built-in cutouts for the electrical elements and the microphones. So that's built into this table. The, there are options. There are options that are cheaper, but you, that, you, you go into, this is essentially what you have now. Surface mount, the, the, the smaller modesty panel like you have now. And then an even cheaper version would be essentially just tabletops. Again, while, while expensive, this, this design checks the boxes for the things that we asked CBI to consider for the board table. This is just one of several colors that can be considered for the table. I would expect a lighter finish that didn't, you know, didn't look, didn't look as mahogany necessarily. I don't think that fits the room very well and probably doesn't fit our style very well either generally as a board. So continuing then for the staff tables, this, it's sort of hard to see, but these tables have built-in electrical outlets under, underneath in the front. So if I were sitting at one of those tables, I'd be able to plug into a little pack right here, as would the other, other members of the team. They're easily movable. They flip up and we can actually set them all back against the wall if we have no need and we're using this room differently, or we can roll others out. The proposal calls for four of these tables to be purchased. A couple would be stored in the corner most of the time and likely two or three for staff purposes. By the way, what would happen to some of these furnishing, furnishings? Some of these chairs, those chairs and these tables? We would intend to, there's a, a conference room downstairs with a big TV on it and one, one big giant square kind of awkward table. We're going to transition that room into an alternate committee meeting room so, so as to essentially be able to run a committee meeting simultaneously if there's court up here or another function. So that, that will be, and it'll have Zoom room capabilities too, so we can even livestream a lower meeting. And we're just gonna reuse furnishings from this room to supply that room. The chairs, we, again, we ask for durability, style. We asked for things like the shoulder rests and then adjustability. That's, that's comprised in, in these standard designs for, for, for seating. This is a little cart that would be positioned behind the staff table in that corner. That would house the bit of electronics that's required to, to, to run the hybrid meeting technologies. What I want to point out and the reason that Creative included this slide, on the bottom left you see those, those labels there relate to state contract and university system pricing. I have the quotes from Creative here. What I, what I can assure you is that all the, all the furnishings that you see up there are products out of the state pre-negotiated contract that Creative or any other furnishing company can purchase on behalf of municipalities in Wisconsin. So this identifies the pricing, the percent discount already applied in the state contract and the resulting price. So important for you to know that we, we do receive the benefit of state contract pre-negotiated pricing for every piece of furniture you saw in the presentation. So that's the extent of the presentation. The funding source, if you recall, about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, we sold land over at
607 Reeve Drive.
But what's the name of the apartment over there?
Country View.
Creek, Country View, Country View Apartments. We sold the land underneath that building that had long been in a different sort of a agreement relationship between the owners and the village. We've sold that property. The sale proceeds were about 570,000.
Exactly 570.
Exactly 570. The board upon that sale had suggested that those funds could be used for a contemplated move from here to the former library building. That obviously has changed. We're staying here. Our suggestion is that we could utilize that funding to make improvements to this room. But I would also suggest that, that we look at some other improvements for a longer life here in this building to other areas of the village's offices. But our suggestion is if, if you approve this now would be to utilize 70,000 from that funding source to, to, to complete the project. And I think I had a specific number in here in my motion. I had it down to the penny, I believe. Is someone gonna find it before I do?
Seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-one.
Yeah, the one, one thing I would note, and maybe it's worth considering, there's gonna be elements of electricity that might need to be run. Bill's got a great crew that can do a number of things, but there may be some, you know, let's say to get the power up to the, to the powered screen that's gonna come down. I might want to suggest authorization perhaps not to exceed 75,000 for completion of this project and the ancillary electrical improvements. So I'd suggest that modification to the recommended motion. With that said, I'll shut up and listen to all your questions. And I hear what other ideas you might have.
Board members? Any comments? Karen?
Sounds great to me. It looks, looks good. You guys have done your homework. You got your pricing. Would there ever be a need? This room fills up on a big item. The downstairs, downstairs area that you're talking about to have a, you know, move these chairs and stuff down there, to have a TV monitor down there that could, if people overflow came, instead of standing out in the hall, they could go to the basement and on TV monitor, you know, watch the meeting from that point.
Yep, we, our IT proposal for creating hybrid meetings includes what we were calling a simulcast. Just like people at home will be able to watch our meetings live, we could easily with the flip of a switch, set up that monitor downstairs to run a simulcast.
I have a question. It doesn't directly have to do with funding, but it has to do with this room. And that is, is there going to be a learning curve for staff to learn the new technology?
There, there will be for the, the staff running the meeting. There's gonna be, it's not gonna be, it actually is gonna be smaller than your surface. It's gonna be a little, a pad that's gonna have preset controls. The, the, what's special about the system is, is with all the programming, and we're paying for this, we're gonna be paying for the programming setup. They're gonna have preset camera positions, preset meeting types, and it's gonna be push and play for staff. There will be training. We've budgeted in that training in our IT proposal. But based on our, the review, the personal look at sample systems that we've had with staff, we believe that by sitting at a table, one of us will be able to take a meeting and make it happen with that tabletop display.
Thank you.
Todd, that screen, where's that gonna come down for? It's, I know it's, it's gonna be visible for all the audience members and I, I don't want to have to move Nyla again.
No, yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. What, for one thing, the screen is gonna be about two and a half feet wider. And actually what you'll, the position that's proposed in the electronic plans has it on this side of that light fixture that is out.
Okay.
So it's gonna be wider to fill the space in front of that, that fixture. Also, the, the monitor or the projector is gonna be replaced with a laser display and that's gonna be a television crisp visual.
Thank you.
Karen?
I think the desk is a good fit for court. I'm glad that we can, you know, make this as, we're not the only ones that use this room. So make it work well for the other purposes. And I know this has been a back and forth and we've had a lot of iterations of this. So thanks for keeping it, keeping it going, making, finding something that works.
Phil?
I think it'll be a nice needed facelift for this room and it gives us flexibility in changing the room around if we want to more than we have now. You know, we could use the table in the corners like an applicant table like Westport has in their boardroom, for example. And it'll just look more professional.
Gary?
Will the Wannakee sign be positioned behind the president?
No, I thought about that. I think as it's positioned on the brick, it, it really does well. What we will move is the, we'll move the flags to the corner. That's gonna, the flags will cause, cause kind of that, that central visual. I think moving the, moving the sign would be tricky. But I don't think it'd be distracting if that's there with the flags to the corner.
So my only question, and Todd and I had a discussion about this. I don't hate that color, actually. It's, it's, I talked about, it's, it's a very masculine look. And in our state government, our federal government, that's the look they have. They're, they're all about power, dominance when they're dealing with that and be, having a very masculine look to it. To me, I don't know that, I, I want it to be a welcoming chamber for people to come into, yet understand that there is authority behind it. So I'm just, that's how I felt about that. First and foremost, since you said I didn't like the color. If that's the color chose, then I'm good with it. The pieces that you talked about rolling away, what kind of warranty do those have? Those are the things I look at that are probably gonna be at most risk because they're a moving piece. It's the only thing that's gonna have that like that.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the warranty. Was it all 10 years on this stuff?
Yeah, it was on that last slide.
That one slide, I think it was 10 years.
Was it 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that's also a negotiated component of the state contracts.
That is? Okay. Okay.
I think it was on the last slide up here. Can you see if there's Sam? Sorry.
Round the top.
10 year, 10 year, yeah. 10. Yeah, well, actually I think it says 12 years. No, it says 10. I'm looking at the wrong thing. It's 10. And will everyone have a microphone? Every, every spot have a microphone if we're gonna do this on TV and?
Yes, that's, that's, that's the plan is every spot will be mic'd. You'll also have on-off controls. I mean, technically you do now. If you didn't know this, if you hold that, the microphone isn't on, the light will go off. You might not even know that. If you let it go, the light comes on and then it's live.
Thanks for telling us.
But there'll be new mics and they'll, they'll have additional controls. I, I, in other cities I've worked for, it was the opposite. If a board member or anyone wanted to speak, you activate your mic and you make your comment. And then you turn it off, which might be, I think that's a more thoughtful, and all the rustling and stuff doesn't get captured on the audio. All right. I am going to make the motion to authorize the village administrator to execute agreements with CBI for Village Boardroom modeling and authorized to use up to $75,000. Not to exceed, sorry, not to exceed $75,000 from land sale proceeds to fund the project.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded by Sam. Any other comments, questions? Call the, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
One note, delivery time on the furniture is for 12 to 14 weeks. That could line up well with the IT improvements, which I was told could be, could be mid-October that we're looking at for that. So now my job is gonna be lining up the two teams, who have been working together already, to, to be ready for the work.
Thanks for putting together that. Okay. Next we have discuss and take action on aquatics planning process slash location.
I gotta, I'm gonna switch. Tim's gonna, Tim's gonna start this one, Chris.
So on, on page 39 of your packet is a draft map that is intended to be included in the outreach materials associated with the referendum. Question is part of the pool project or aquatic facility project. There was some discussion at the last Village Board meeting about location. And so what we did as staff, we started putting together some criteria to identify potential sites, viable or non-viable sites, starting with site size. So we started with five acres or greater. The, the sites had to be owned by the village and we started there. And so from that map, it's what you see right now. So what we're really looking for is some direction. Is there anything else that's needed on here? I would like to point out though, that though some, some of the green, what are, are, you know, potentially eligible sites, they're not necessarily recommendations. They just meet the criteria. Obviously, if an aquatic facility were located on some of those sites, that would mean the existing infrastructure would have to go away. So there'd be additional expense associated with that. And then those fields or, or facilities would have to be located elsewhere. But it's just really, again, intended to demonstrate that we looked at several different sites with some objective criteria. The blue triangles, our lands identified as future community residential use on our comp plan, that's on page 40. Unknown in terms of when those areas would develop. So although those could be considered a viable site, those would, lands would have to be developed and that's a huge question mark right now. So available for questions? I don't know, Sue, if you wanted to add anything that I missed? But we're really looking for your feedback on this map that again, could be used to be inclusive of those outreach materials prior to the referendum.
And to be clear, we're not here asking you, asking for you to pick the spot. But there's, there's some really, there's some really important, there's some important things that this shows us that I, I really want to flush out with the board. We've heard, we've heard a desire for center of the village, try, try to get into the middle. As much as, I'll tell, at least from a staff level, we wish that, that perfect thing jumped out at us. This tells us that while maybe some spite, spots might be reasonable, when we apply our minimum criteria, that really, that really changes the opportunities for us. So the, while, while we're not gonna pick the site, it's really important for you to help us know for certain whether certain things can't be on the table. For example, if the Village Board says, hey, Village Park. If you, you're like Village Park, that's untouchable. That's gotta stay what it is. That informs us when we go tell the public what is within the realm of possibility. Rip Park. I'm not, I can keep going down the list. It's really important to know where you care to draw the line with the current infrastructure. I don't know if I was strong enough with my comments, but this is really gonna help us communicate effectively with the public in the marketing process.
Hey, Phil? What do you think?
Wow.
You're welcome.
I, I agree. There's no place in, in the middle. Just not there.
Gary?
Yeah, I would agree that, I mean, at least Village Park in my mind is off limits, even though that's where, ideally, that's where it could go. But there'd be some baseball fans that wouldn't like that. So. But there'd be some baseball fans that wouldn't like that, so, um, it makes it tougher. Everything we choose is gonna be outside somewhere.
Okay. Sam?
The only suggestion that I would make on the map itself is, some people are not very good at reading aerial maps, so you don't label like Main Street, Woodland, or whatever, so people know what they're looking at.
Sure. We, this is really, just like I say, a dra- a draft map for the discussion. When it comes time to be, to be inclusive, they'll be a legend of what those parks are, places are, um, landmark streets and so forth, yeah.
Gary?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, it's, uh, I have, even looking at this, this map is great. I'm hesitant to be like, oh, this is the best spot because I don't want people to think like, this is where we're picking. This, people could say, no pool at all, and then we're, um, no conversation. But I think, I mean, we have great parks and it might take, you know, a little change of like what is there and moving those somewhere else. And, you know, if that's a, you know, bunch of soccer fields that could be located at a different park or a new park, you know, that might be against some, you know, traditions, but probably benefits the, you know, crazy parking at a park or unsafe pedestrian access. So I'm glad we have, you know, a range of spaces. It's really nice to see the existing neighborhood pools. I know there's, you know, it doesn't have to be farthest away from all of them, but it's nice to see what neighborhoods have less aquatic, um, access. Yeah, I, I wish we had a gazillion acres of parkland, but, um, I'm, I guess this is a really good visual, so.
So you want a Chicago-style size parkland?
Yes. Let's just buy the whole state.
I don't know how many acres that is, but, okay. Nyla?
I know I'll have some ball fans or soccer fans that'll say, what's she thinking of? Um, but I've been around for a long time, a lot longer than I wanna admit. And in the eighties, early nineties, when the wave was working on a pool project, the village at that time was looking at Rip Park. And that's the only thing I have to really, you know, input that I'll, that I can think of. There's, you know, there is parking there. Um, there are other, there are fields there, um, that would have to be looked at. I, I'm not saying that would be my choice, but I'm just giving that information because that's what the village was looking at at that time.
That's what I was afraid to say.
We, we actually, we actually wanna hear things that you might be afraid to say.
I don't hope.
I don't wanna put you in a, but this is, this is gonna be really useful for us as we, as we message this.
All right, I think I got everybody. So I'm not afraid to say anything. So I'll, I'll, I'll say it. For what it's worth, I mean, I had, I'd say at Wannafest this weekend, I had fifty percent of the people said, why are you building a pool? Fifty percent say, we gotta have a pool put in. We had, so it's about fifty-fifty on just about every topic that, that arose, including where it should go. So it's not, I'm not shocked that we're in the same kinda mode here where it's like, eh, eh, eh. If I had a perfect world, um, and we had a participating seller, um, I, and I talked to Tim about it, the American Legion site, if they were willing, it's a little bit smaller than what we need. But I would say with where downtown is set up, it's a great location for us to have a pool. So if we had to have a little bit smaller pool, then maybe we put an off-site splash pad somewhere else, we get it into downtown, it's workable. That's, that's how I feel. We already have a parking lot potentially there too with where our overflow library parking lot is. So that helps to, to offset land. Now, I hope I don't get my house egged or anything for saying that. My other one is, and I think of the senior center in the village center, and we talked about Village Park and the Ball Diamond. I don't know how many of the ball players have been asked about it, what their thoughts are. There was a time where they reached out 'cause they want lights, and we weren't put, willing to put lights down there. So could we get them a facility out in one of our other lands and, and that's a really well-done baseball field with lights? Maybe. Is that site big enough? Based on parking and everything. Those are, in my opinion, the only two real sites that make sense in the downtown. With the exception of if we were to deal with the school and go into Heritage Elementary, where that is, and they're going through a whole process right now themselves, so I don't really wanna mess with that process. But that would be another potential location if the school was wanting to go somewhere else. I don't think that's the case. Which leaves us with, where's the best location? There's not a best location, I don't feel, in this situation. If we go to Rip, the, okay, that's one side of the town. If we go to our, uh, Water Wheel, that location, um, that's another very south side of town. It's gonna be very difficult to say which side of town is gonna get it, or which one's not gonna get it. And are people gonna vote for or against based on that? I, I don't know, you know, with, with that. Or is Hogan Road, is that, is that one? Or the north side? Maybe there's land that, um, is gonna be developed in the future and we can negotiate parkland out past Easy Street. Um, that would make it easier than the small parcel that we were talking about over there, um, as well. You know, if it's future development, we know that we gain a certain amount of parkland. We don't have to pay for that. We can make it, set it, set it up perfectly for an aquatic center. So to me, um, messing with any existing park is more of a challenge than looking at our potential development sites to put it at. Because we can make it, tailor-make it to that area of that park and build it into that. Right now, if I look at Rip Park, I say, okay, what's in Rip Park? Soccer fields, football, tennis? Disc golf we just put in. There's all these different things that we've put into that park right now that we've invested a lot of money into, so that we'll be pulling those things away from it. Do we have another park like that, or that amount of land that we're gonna get? How many acres is that park? Sue, Rip? Forty, eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty acres. We don't get many eight, eighty-acre parks, um, that we have that many different things going on. And you're right, who said parking? Yeah, there's parking. Did you say parking, Nyla? There's parking there. And ironically, we put parking in there, we thought we had too much and we didn't have enough, and we added up, ended up adding more parking because that park has so many different activities going on. Am I gonna stop talking?
No, I just wanted to bring up that, in six, in Rip Park, there's a large portion of it that's got Six Mile Creek running through it. And I don't think we're gonna be able to do anything over there at all.
Yeah, but the dog park on the north side and then coming around?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, that's the same with the American Legion site, with the water there is and how close we can infringe on, and so it shrinks that quite a bit, so. So I'm, I'm just saying, I, to my, my belief is if the community says we wanna have a, a pool, which is our question, figuring out our future parks is the best location, 'cause we can, we can say that's where it's gonna go into at that point. And whoever the board is at that time, um, and say, all right, yeah, it's over here. We, we, we know that people want an aquatics facility, now here's where it's going to be. We don't have that right now. We know where our potentials are, I think. I mean, you've got Golden Ponds, and you've got Hogan Road, you've got, um, Kill County Wests. And there's different spots that are, are not far off into the futures, what I'm getting at, that we could plan for it and have it in there. So that's, that's my, my thoughts on it. That saves us from having to purchase land, too. Yeah?
Um, kind of in a parks planning question, are there, pool aside, um, like park usage types, soccer field, crossfields, whatever, that we are like also seriously lacking or, um, that are, we need our parks to be in the future?
So coincidentally, we are in the middle of, um, updating our park and open space plan. So Wednesday night, Village Center, six o'clock, um, we actually will be, um, hosting our consulting firm that is gonna come and talk about quantitative analysis for facilities throughout the village. So two things kind of happening simultaneously, good timing, so, more to come.
Here, we can talk about, you know, the Veridian site. You know, they have a big park in the center there that they're going to put in. And, you know, maybe that's an option. But again, it's on the edge of town somewhere.
I don't know the topography on that, so I couldn't, how that'll work, if it's too much, but I don't, I don't know about that part.
Level, they, you know, because it's supposed to be a soccer field area or something, I think they're bigger parks, Sue. But I don't know if that's five acres. I can't remember.
Eight point two.
Eight point two. So, you know, instead of putting more soccer fields in and stuff, maybe we have too many of already or enough of. Maybe that's a site where you could put a pool.
What is our ratio that we get as far as parkland dedication?
And percent.
Okay. So forty acres is?
Four acres.
Four acres, pretty simple number. Eighty acres is eight acres, you know, so if we're five acres for one and we have a three-acre park or somewhere else in that area, that's, that, that's the beauty of what we have is we're developing these plots, um, to plan that out. Park people will be really important with that, obviously, to get that done. Are we giving you guys enough for what you're looking for? Or not? I don't know.
So one, one of the guys, the, the questions is, is, is there anything that needs to be amended on this? So for example, you've had a discussion about some of the parks, whether it's Rip or Village Park, of, should we just take those off? Or, or should we leave them on for this map as potential sites?
So I guess it took, I, I mean, my thought is what I said it was, we should use it in a developing park to use it and put it into and not change our existing core, which we've already figured out. But if, if we go on that route, that's your, that's your advice, is we just, we're gonna identify from the future land masses where that, which, which one is the best potential location for the park versus our existing parks.
I would, I would rather do what you're talking about so that we're not tearing up and getting rid of what we already have built. So, you know, we spent money and time. We don't want to undo what we've already done, especially when there's possibl- other possibilities.
I guess I would say almost the opposite of, I think having all these, like if the public sees this, yeah, we might take, we probably will, take some critiques of like, oh my goodness, they're gonna put a pool in Village Park. But I think it helps people see like, this is what we're working with, these are the current places we have. And it almost opens the conversation for you guys of like, oh, we don't want these facilities changed. We would rather have it on and outside developing. Or if there's a need of like, okay, we could put seven soccer lacrosse fields here, but this area might be good 'cause that's where it's located. I,
So that, that, you, I don't disagree. Uh, uh, my philosophy is based on, we can put the pool aquatics place there. Uh, an item like, um, your splash pad that the, that you've been looking at, that could be placed in any of our parks. And all right, that's a lot easier thing to do in the existing parks, 'cause you're not taking much space. That's why I'm looking at out into the future, what, what are the land areas that we're gonna develop? 'Cause we know we're gonna be out on the perimeter at this point.
Is there any way that there could be a list put together explaining pros and cons to using something that, area of land that's going to be developed versus la- a park that is already, um, developed?
I guess we didn't wanna do that.
Okay.
Um, we wanted to just try and create an objective criteria. If you give that to us,
Because some, you know, some people may look at it and say, oh, we want it in this park, not really even connecting with the fact that, okay, then this ball field has to go and this soccer field and, and, until you really get into the nitty-gritty, a lot of people just don't give it a lot of thought. But when it hits home, okay, if we do it in this park, we're going to lose this. I mean, not specifically to any one park, just say, you know, the parks that are currently developed, if a pool went in there, there's a possibility that we would lose, uh, existing amenities that are, are used.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. This is about, this is about our public presentation, really. Things to consider if.
Right.
Is what you're, and, and there's some good low-hanging fruit there. Amenities already spent that have to be relocated. Neighboring residents who didn't go there knowing, uh, who went there not knowing a pool would be their neighbor, et cetera. Um, we can, as staff, we can have a, have a decent, be prepared for that question in our presentations.
Funds have been used to develop these parks, you know, so.
So you just made one of my arguments, actually, that I didn't do a good job speaking about. Is if we put it in those new subdivisions, it's there, it's platted to go in there, so all those residents know it's going to be there, too. 'Cause there's gonna be residents that say, I've been, I had a thirty minutes threatening session of if I did anything on the baseball diamond in, in Village Park. Truly thirty minutes that I just got lambasted. And I, I mean, you're gonna have people that really get irate about existing things. It's like lights, when you go to put lights in an area, people get bent out of shape, 'cause if they're there beforehand, they're there. If they're not, it's totally different.
For the pool, I assume we have lights at the pool, and you'd have to park the parking lot, Phil mentioned. You have to light the parking lot. So the pool doesn't seem like it's a lot of lights, but the parking lot, all of a sudden, if you put it in an area where residents have been living, it would be a noticeable.
And I don't wanna be around anywhere in town when you cut down all those trees in Village Park. I'm out of town then. That would be a big mistake.
Yes, I agree.
And you can't put a pool in where you're full of trees like that.
Yes, trees are bad for pools.
I, you know, I'm firm, we gotta stay on the edge of town. Somewhere new. People will get over it.
So is there anybody that's a post, I'm trying to give Tim direction, is there anybody at posts that's saying, let's do this on the perimeter in a new subdivision? That's your newly planted area?
Potential.
Potentials?
Yeah.
Yeah, the potentials.
Do it.
As in not, like, sharing this map at all?
No, I think we would share the map, we, 'cause we can show what our, whatever our, our future land developments are and where, where, when they're slated for potentially. I mean, you have quite a few that we're gonna have coming online.
I think part of the exercise in doing this as well is to show that we've looked at all the lands. And to, so if someone says, well, did you look at this or did you look at that, so, yeah, hopefully the answer will be, yes, we did. Rather than if you pull them off and, you know, just show those, those outlaw, outlying ones. But I guess what I, what I'm hearing at least now is to include in the narrative anyway, the, the notion that there will be trade-offs if, for, I'll just throw in something, Centennial Park, if, if that becomes a site, obviously, that's fully developed. Many, some, all of those improvements are gonna have to go away if the, if that's a decision for the park to go, go there. Is that, is that kinda what I'm hearing?
Plus the neighbors may be very unhappy.
Yes.
Or they love having a pool in their backyard. I don't know. That maybe is better than seven AM soccer. I don't know.
I guess, and, and you're jumping here, Todd, but I guess we didn't, we didn't wanna be, um, leading. We wanted to just provide as much objective criteria and, and to, to tell the story that we've looked at several sites that, that in the explanatory question, they're talked about, um, um, the, the hope that no additional lands would need to be purchased, insinuating that would be on village-owned land.
So if you want me to dwell down to what I really think, I think that Easy Street would be a great spot. We don't have any of our neighborhood pools in that area. I think Kill County West could be a great spot, 'cause we, this whole section on this side of Q does not have any neighborhood pools. And then Hogan Road would be the other one, 'cause it's out there. Those are the three that I think, those would be my choices if I had.
Do we know what part of those are going to be parkland? That's not already?
To some extent, that's the beauty of picking a place like that, because you can master.
That's why I asked that question. So if there's, there's a hundred acres, it's ten acres of land that is going to get dedicated for parkland.
We just, we don't know when or which area? We're just adding more specifically, like, I guess I don't.
Yeah, the, I was just putting out there what's we know as land that's in our plans to be developed.
Let, let me suggest this, uh, for, for maybe voters to be aware, let's say, let's say there's resounding support for people wanting a pool in our village, seventy percent. If that's what the referendum tells you, we're back to you, or maybe the Parks Committee or, or a collection of committees, talking about where we should pursue those options with vigor. And with that, you know, then all of a sudden, we're talking to landowners about their facing plans, coming to the table with master development, you know, master development designs. And, and we start to hone in on two, three,
Um, and, and we start to hone in on two, three sites, uh, based on those negotiations and discussions with those, those owners. Um, if, I, if a voter, if a voter comes to the polls in November with the expectation that their, that their vote is, is tied to one site or another, I think that voter would be disappointed with the way we've put together our question. Our question is really, should Wannakee have a pool or not? And, and being non-binding, um, which it, I think has to be non-binding, um, it's going to serve you with information. Um, again, the portion of that answer, and if we've got a seventy percent margin, we're quickly talking about who do you want us to talk to next? And, and another level of work begins. We've got some good work done, we know what it can look like. We know what the residents have told us they would enjoy seeing in a facility with the work we've done with, uh, Councilman Hunsaker.
I'll just put in, the fourth one would be Veridian. I didn't think about that one until you brought it up tonight. So that's, that's maybe one too, I'd say, makes sense, those four.
Because I'd like to think a developer would say, "Oh gosh, I never thought of this, but if the village would put a pool in my development, that would be a, a big bonus to me." And they would be all for it and, um.
We could use the impact fees for the pool.
Right.
So they put in the indoor park.
It's just a, I don't know. And sometimes I think, I like, I like when I drive into a community because there's some that you do. You drive by, you come, that's why I always like Village Park, because you drive through and you see kids playing out there and it just looks neat. Uh, you know, when I go to, uh, Otoma, they have a big splash park and you're coming in, on a certain side of town and there's kids out there and moms and sitting around and, and, you know, that, uh, Woodland and Q up here on the corner. Have a pool that, you know, I think it's kind of iconic to, you know, each come into Wannakee and you can see a pool up there and packed with kids and families. It's just kind of a, you know, instead of hiding it back in a corner somewhere that nobody ever sees, I just think it's a positive thing for the community that it should become a showplace.
And I think Woodland and Q or the Water Wheel site would be good ones because, you know, you think about it, it could become a day outing. You know, families can take their children, they can walk to places to take them to eat and then they can go to the pool. Perhaps they could go out for dinner, vice versa. You know, if we put it in a neighborhood far away from that, they don't have that opportunity. And it creates more, potentially more economic impact that way too.
Okay, did we give you enough here? I don't, I, I don't know if we're giving you what you guys are looking for, we're.
Well, I, I haven't heard of, of, of change this, add this, delete this, so, um.
So I'll say.
Good, good discussion, but I guess.
Is there anybody who, who believes we should put this in Village Park?
No.
No.
No, but I think we should show people that.
It's a, that it's there.
That it's.
So that they can say no to it themselves.
Okay, is there any of those?
I think, first of all, thank you to Tim and Tracy who put this map together because we dreamed it and they made it happen. For me, what is really important about this map is we all have talked to a lot of residents who all said, "It'd like this pool to be in the middle of the village." And we all would say, "Great, wha- what, where?" And I don't think, um, I think everybody sort of assumed that there was a secret corner of the village where we owned some property that they just couldn't think of, right? Because they could, everybody could say, "Well, not Centennial, not Village Park." But there must be, there must be five acres in the village somewhere that we could pick from. And, and really what this picture shows is there wasn't. Because when we started this project, we said to Tracy, "Identify every piece of property that the village owns that is five acres or greater." Because we really wanted to be thorough and we didn't want to assume that anybody did or didn't know anything. And I, I love this map because it's very complete and honest and it shows what's out there. We colored some of those areas red. We did, we made a judgment call because, for example, we knew we couldn't build a swimming pool in the Village Center pond. So we made that one red. But we didn't make Centennial red or Village Park red, even though we knew, or, or Northridge. I think that's a great example. Northridge Park is big enough, but in the middle of Northridge Park is a shelter that we just spent four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars built. But we didn't make it red, any of those, because the decision could be made to move facilities. I, I love this map and I think everybody in the village should have the opportunity to see this map, just as you did tonight. Because then you know, there are no secret five-acre parcels tucked anywhere in the village that we couldn't think of.
Spark the discussion.
It's, it's just really great information for people to be able to see.
That's what I think.
I think we, as a board, kind of talked at least to the point that, boy, we don't want to, we don't want to tear out what we've already put in somewhere. Because it may not impact me, but there might be soccer families who say, "Rip Park is sacred, you can't do that. We love it out here, that's where we'd like to be." And, and so I think as a board, we've kind of decided that, you know, I don't think we have a park that we can tear apart to put a pool in, because I don't think it would have a, a real good impact for most people.
At the same time, we're letting them, like, "Oh, we could use better setup for soccer or whatever," like.
Sparks the dialogue.
Yeah, I, I think it's also that, I don't want, someone might not know who owns what land. If you're driving by, they might not know that that's, oh, that vacant spot isn't actually the village's. That's someone's backyard or that's, that's like, I think letting them decide what they want, maybe they'll get out and go to all of these and see them, but, or, "Oh, there's so many trees there, we wouldn't want to tear that down." I guess I don't, don't want to speak for people too much, um, and show them the visual of like.
So I'll tell you my dream, because they dream a lot, daydream usually, but if you put a pool on a Q, a Q and Woodland corner incorporated with a parking lot, a band shell, I thought that would be kind of cool. Just.
Yeah, hold, open mic.
My dreams are.
That's what this is about, is dreaming. So. I, I, I don't know what else we can add. I, I feel like we're kind of at where we, we think. I, I'm, it's kind of like the village right now, there's probably going to be fifty-fifty on a lot of this stuff and right now it sounds a little bit like we might have that.
We'll certainly add text that helps explain the key and the legend and, and, and Sammy, you mentioned some of the things in terms of additional information. I guess I, what I'm hearing at least by, is, is, this is okay, don't, don't flip this color or that color. That, I haven't heard that yet, so.
I mean, I think it's great if we have our first community event that we have all these maps up. People can come in, see, little presentation on what's in those parks.
Right.
Invite people to go and look in the parks to see what's out there. And then, um, you know, I think it'd be really hard to touch Centennial Park. I think it'd be hard to touch a lot. I mean, I, I can't see us doing anything in any of the parks, but if people would want to do that, I, I don't think we should eliminate it to your guys, I think it was to your point of errand. And I just think we can do so much with something that's a new piece of property and we know where those properties are going to be, so. I shouldn't say the ac- exact spot, but in the eighty acres that are sitting there, somewhere in that subdivision is going to be that park that's going to be there, where the pool would go. People will know it's going to go there before they buy their homes.
And you know, if you put a, you know, you can say, let's say it's an eighty-acre parcel and you're going to have ten percent, so there's eighty acres of parkland, we need five for a pool. You know, around a pool, they normally have some play equipment and some other things. So that provides the residents of that eighty acres, a playground area for their kids. You're just not going to have soccer fields and baseball diamonds in your neighborhood, but you know that going in in a new development. And there's going to be lights there, but you know that going in. So I think it makes it a lot easier to sell, you know, doing it this way.
All right, does everybody feel comfortable?
Yep.
With the.
You have information?
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate the critical conversation. I think if anything else, if, if we were to ask, um, the voters to understand what it feels like to be in the shoes of a village board member, um, I think it, this helps send the message of the complicated decisions that would be in, in front of us and the types of things we'd have to consider as we walk through it.
And I'll add, complicated but very doable.
Oh, yeah.
If the voters want a pool, so, all right.
Or if someone wants to give us their lands on this map for another option, no charge.
Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny.
Five acres. You might be putting together several to get the five acres. All right, so that's it, I think we just need one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thanks, everybody, good discussion.